I think we're good, actually, right here. Okay, so, ladies and gentlemen, we are reconvening at 2:25. For those of you who weren't here in the morning, packed session with board work on the hill, or, it's not a hill, but flats.
[laughing]
And got, and I think Mertz just established, but I will, again, for the record, or any further public participations that didn't get in before lunch. Okay, thank you very much. Then we can move on to approval of state Board of Ed minutes of February 8, 2011. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Eileen.
Support.
Supported by Dan.
I actually have some corrections.
Okay.
Can I just give them to Marilyn and the Typos and a few other things that I've found?
Sure.
Okay.
Four boards.
So with that, that in mind, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Did public participation? Discussion action items, item D. I'll turn this right over to John.
As we're all aware, State Board of Education has the constitutional leadership over all public education, and by the Constitution, we appoint the state superintendent who serves as leader of our Department of Education, our public education leader in Michigan, constitutional officer and cabinet secretary for the governor. As, you know, we, we've all contributed in writing as the board members, an evaluation of Mike on various dimensions of his leadership management, alignment, and impact, and have met together to, as, as, in a framework that we've all agreed to and approved by the board, we've met today to talk together with Mike about our evaluation, and what Mike understands, and we're delighted that he serves as superintendent at the pleasure of the State Board of Education. We, as a board, are very pleased and give Mike our strong continuing endorsement and really appreciate the strong leadership, the strong leadership in tough times, budgetary, financial and otherwise, but also strong leadership in really driving and focusing on education improvement and reforms that can help us improve educational outcomes in Michigan for our young people. So, we are delighted to vote today to extend Mike's contract for another three years to provide the kind of durability and constancy of leadership and continuing reform that's important in this state. And so there's a, an addendum to an agreement, the ongoing agreement we've had with Superintendent Flanagan, that would be modified, basically, to extend it for another year through 2000, May 1, 2014, and at the same salary, increase or decrease equivalent to other state employees. And we appreciate, as I think we've all said before, we would, by performance, be eager to contribute more to Mike's salary. We appreciate that he is appreciating the financial sacrifice that everyone's been making and is continuing to be willing to serve as superintendent at, at least as far as salary matters, at a salary that's way below what peers in the field often earn. And that's an opportunity for him to contribute his talents to help change and improve education in Michigan, which we appreciate him willing to make the sacrifice to continue to do. So I'm gonna, I'll certainly offer Mike and fellow board members a chance to comment, but I will move support of the seventh addendum to the agreement between the State Board of Education and Michael Flanagan.
Support.
There was a motion and support moved by John, supported by, was it Nancy?
Whatever, Cassandra. I think we both said at the same time.
Nancy.
It was.
Nisandra.
Nisandra.
Nisandra. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you very much. Appreciated the discussion and appreciated the time you took to spend some time putting some things in writing, too. It is a pleasure. I, I think there are challenging days for all of us, but, you know, we have a chance to really help Michigan get back to top 10 in so many ways. I think sometimes when I look at statistics like per capita income, I, that doesn't mean a lot to me until I think about, by having moved from the top 10 in per capita to almost 40 now, in the last decade, that we've increased poverty, we've decreased, decreased the chances of kids coming to school ready to learn, and all this other stuff. So, I think we have an opportunity to really be thoughtful as you're doing and, and help kids improve, and help the system change, and we'll all be proud of it a couple of years, I think, of key time that we all served. So, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. This is a resolution, discussion was this morning, for those that weren't here this morning, but an approval of a resolution on Governor Snyder's budget. I think John's gonna leave that to the discussion.
We discussed the purpose and the specifics of the resolution on the budget. Let me, we did modify it a tad, let me just explain the modifications and ask for your support. In, in the third paragraph, we modified the third line to read, "Define greater efficiencies and cost savings, including in school district healthcare and pension systems." The suggestion being, there, there are ways for schools to save money through shared services, through efficiencies, through consolidation, et cetera, and there's opportunities for school districts to figure out how to negotiate changes in their healthcare and pension systems. So that was that attention. In the, in the paragraph much discussed before the bullets, the language remains as it was. I looked at the, Kathy's comments and others about the language, but I think the Constitution asks us to advise the legislature as to the financial requirements for education. And so, to repeat that language, then say the budget as proposed does not yet provide the financial requirements to fund, the threshold elements I don't think could be much clearer in terms of its intent. So, I would propose we leave that as it is. And then, we did modify the first bullet per suggestion and the third bullet, and the last paragraph to say as they finalize the budget, assuming it is, they're able to pass a two-year budget and it is the budget, and as they look at future years. So, those are the changes. I guess I would welcome a motion to pass this resolution on Governor Snyder's budget.
Some move.
Moved by Eileen, it was supported by Cassandra. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say, I really appreciate John's work on this and trying to get all of us together.
Right.
I, I made my pitch this morning, and I'll, I'll support it.
You're sticking by it.
Well, I appreciate, I mean, we are doing what we're here to do. It's a collective effort, and I, I thank you for the comments, but this is what we're, we're elected to do.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Aye.
And no members.
Do you need an honest approval, that was?
No, that was Richard voted no. Thank you. Let's see. Lisa would like to come up and join us, and, speaking of a state and federal legislative update, today's been an active day in that regard. I would, I would say to the board, while I, while we're on that topic a little bit, I'm probably not gonna be able to make a CCSSO federal thing. I've asked Lisa to make sure she can. She was planning to be part of that, anyway, but has now even modified her schedule to try to accommodate any board members who may go to that as a combo this year, to do visits on Tuesday afternoon, if you'd like to arrange logistics so that you could accommodate that. And if something changes, I'll try to, right now, part, well, I'll probably put that in writing to you to some degree. It has to do with, I've got a Cleveland visit on, on exactly that same time, so it turns out I'm not gonna be able to make that. And I probably, and, it's a good one, so I'd encourage board members that can make that to do so. But anyway, Lisa's gonna be there to support your, your efforts, and particularly any visits on that Tuesday afternoon, as I said, that you might wanna make with some of the congressional folks. Lisa, please.
A few things have changed since this was written last week. The first thing is, several more hearings have been scheduled by the U.S. House related to ESEA reauthorization. In fact, I think there's a total of eight or 10 hearings now scheduled over the next few weeks. They include topics on budget and policy proposals of the, of U.S. Ed, three hearings on education regulations with a focus on roadblocks, burying schools, and federal outreach. And you can hear a theme there that they seem to be focusing on, are there too many federal regulations? And then, the last two are on a focus on the role of higher ed and job growth, but I think it's still a part of this whole big picture of where they're headed with ESEA reauthorization. And that same website, I think that I have there, gets you to the committee, and you can watch them online, I'm sure they're on C-SPAN, too, but I find it easier because they archive them online, and that way you can watch them whenever you, whenever you On the budget, in here, I talked about the fact that they were working on a short-term stopgap resolution, which was passed and signed by Obama, so that extended the budget until March 18th. On Friday, the Senate approves, proposed a full-year continuing resolution that included about half the amount of cuts that the House did, and it seems like what they're trying to do is set up a place where they can sort of split the difference. Obviously, it's not pretty in any sense of the word, or there's, there's still billions of dollars in cuts, including much to education. There are some increases in Title I, increases in IDEA state grants being proposed, but, but overall, overall funding is reductions of $30 to $40 billion. So, that's obviously the, the main thing that they're working on at this point for the next week or two at the federal level. On the state front, this morning, the Senate passed, excuse me, the Senate moved the EFM bills from essentially their general orders to third reading, which means tomorrow would be the final vote. The House would still need to concur, there's some changes, it's not, none of the changes are huge, I don't think, but there are some, just little takes on how the two different sides are doing things, and they're gonna have to come up with some kind of agreement, I think. My understanding is that behind the scenes, they have been working, so it may just be that whatever this version is that the Senate is working on, it just goes to the House and they concur and it's done. But I'm not sure if, you know, I never know if they'll have to, sometimes they like to divide the bills up so that some are House and some are Senate, and so then you'll suddenly see votes on extra bills, that way they have a bipartisan package and that kind of thing. So you may see some of that also.
A bi- house pack, bi-chamber package, maybe not a bipartisan package.
Right, right.
In this case.
Right. Although there were some similar-ish bills offered by both sides of the aisle, some from Detroit legislators, none, all of the different versions are different, but, I mean, all of the versions are, are pretty different, but, but you're right, so far it's been, it's bicameral and not necessarily bipartisan. On the, on the budget piece, I added, attached to the report that I sent you, the State Budget Office highlights documents, I did the MDE and the School Aid budget, because even though, as you know, the School Aid falls under the Budget Office, it's such, we work so closely with them on it, especially on the language, on how things get implemented, since, you know, our School Aid office is the office that has to get out all of those accurate payments to all of the districts across the state. I wanna take the, a moment to acknowledge both Janet Laverdy and Dan Hanrahan in MDE, who have been great to work with. Janet got to do what Rick Floria used to do, which was go and do the initial presentation to the committee and say, "This is what's in it," and, you know, and she did a great job, it was her first time at it. And Dan Hanrahan and I worked closely on trying to get rid of some obsolete language that was in School Aid, and just some, some references to federal statutes that haven't existed for, for years. We tried to take some time and go through and do some of that, but both of them just did a great job. And if we get, if you have detailed questions, we can turn to them, but.
You know, we, we were, as you know, we were all concerned, as you were, about some of the folks who took their early retirement, and there's still a few challenges to that. But in terms of the positions that we could replace, like the Budget Director, remember, the entire Budget Office left.
Yeah.
Entire Budget Office took their, took the incentive. And we were so lucky, in a way, that under the last administration, we were given the, the library system, and, for different reasons, but one reason was, we were able to get to know Janet Laverdy, and she just does a great job. Rick is hard to replace, he's been here since he was 11 in 1963, I think.
[laughing]
I mean, almost, seriously, right? Wasn't it 30 some years for Rick?
Yeah, 30 some years.
It was a worry, but, boy, she's just sensational, and we miss Rick, but we're really lucky to have Janet.
She had, she had worked for the library before?
Yeah, yeah, she had been over there, and then we kinda got Carol first, she was gonna be here, I thought, but we, at any rate, when she's here, we'll maybe just recognize her, she's just, she's, as Lisa said, really doing a wonderful job.
That's good.
Any, any, first of all, any comments or any actions that the board may want to think about, given that? If I kinda know there is one, I might as well.
I have a couple, I mean, two, two things. Given our legislative committee and efforts have been worried about accreditation, but two things I hope we can do. One is, whoever's going to Washington to interface around what we hope the federal reauthorization needs to look like, you know, I hope can, perhaps it's the, it's working with you, Lisa, our legislative committee, Nancy and Cassandra, and perhaps our NASB delegate, get together and figure out what is our position vis a vis federal reauthorization, so that if you're meeting with our representatives, et cetera, we are advocating the board's position on what we wanna see in that legislation. I hope we can do that, I think it's important that we speak as, with one voice and have the message, and, you know, I certainly would like to make sure that we agree on what that message is, so I don't know how to do that between now and then, but, you know, I, and others, I'm sure have strong feelings on what we would hope that that federal reauthorization looks like, so if we could figure out how to do that. And the second, we, we did not get a legislative committee meeting together in the face of this fast-moving, some of the fast-moving legislation, like the EFM. And so I was encouraging Cassandra and other board members to bring forward a resolution or ideas of what we need to say about that before it's all over, or just give our perspective, and I think it's important. And so I wanted to encourage Cassandra to, to share what she's put together and have some discussion about what we wanna say about the EFM legislation, which has certainly been fast-tracked. But it is the kind of thing I hope our legislative committee can continue to help us grapple with, which is, what is our position vis a vis these fast-moving, or any moving target of legislation?
Right. So I'm, I'm very concerned about the speed at which this is moving through, and the State Board of Education not having an opportunity to weigh in, and I apologize to Nancy, because I literally just drafted this like an hour ago, so, otherwise, I would've definitely cleared it through you first.
Yeah, it's all right.
But I wanted to gauge the board's interest in at least making a statement or a comment or some type of resolution to the legislature, so that we can weigh in with our particular point of view as far as the emergency financial manager legislation is concerned. So I drafted something, it's just a first draft, you know, certainly open to any comments or criticisms, but at least it's something for us to kind of, as a starting point, if there's interest to do this. So I will.
While you're doing that, I see Dan Hanrahan, you know, when Lisa mentioned that he's with her, just because he's been around a while, he brings a real level head and a, you know, level of expertise to those hearings that I, I wanna make sure I'm acknowledging, I wanted to talk about the transition to Janet, but Dan, thank you for what you do there, too. Thank you.
Sure.
Please.
Thank you.
Do you want folks to read it for a minute first, or what?
And, again, Nancy and Cassandra, you know, I, I do hope we can stay ahead of the legislative agenda, but this is a hot, you know, item, and it's not, not, no one's responsibility, it's just, it's part of what I hope we can thoughtfully reflect on and provide our two cents on, our pieces of legislation. But this one's a pretty big deal, so I at least wanted to be responsive that we talk about it. And from my point of view, I mean, several of you did an op-ed, actually, Richard and Mary Ann and others, which said some things about what we want in that legislation, which I am curious is what you said and we said, or you as board members in the legislation, and what do we care most about in this legislation that's right or wrong with it? From my point of view, I, you know, I was looking for appreciation of, we all wanted some changes and some clarification in this legislation. I, like others personally, was concerned that the government, or the, the legislation was perhaps seeking to diminish or destroy collective bargaining, while I've been applauding the governor's not doing it in Wisconsin, and basically seeking to work with and through collective bargaining as we look for budget cuts in other ways, and that unclear on if it was, how it was treating or diminishing the role of the politically accountable elected officials at the municipal level and/or school boards. So, I certainly don't have a, those are two concerns, I'm, I would like us to say I don't like things about that are diminishing, or diminution of collective bargaining and the politically elected leader's role, but that's just a bit of filling the airtime while you all read what this actually says.
Mary Ann and Nancy.
You like filling airtime.
Yeah, he does. He's a big air filler.
What's the name for that, a balloon?
Yeah. I think it was Mary Ann first, and then Nancy.
I won't say.
I guess maybe it was Nancy.
One thing I'd like to see in here is regular disclosure of EFM actions, particularly with signing contracts and maybe posting something online, monthly, something like that.
So it's public disclosure, not to a certain body?
Oh, absolutely.
Well, I just wanted to make clear, yeah.
The more public, the better.
Yeah. I just think it's important when we not be, so, that we try to degeneralize as much as possible if you're gonna make a statement, because otherwise, it's taken out of context.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess the other thing is that the EFM should take care of finances, should not become an academic leader, or take that on.
So you don't think that saying just clearly identifying the roles and responsibilities is going far enough? You want it to specifically indicate that?
Well, see, they, they could clearly state that, that the EFM should become an academic leader as well, and I would not want that, that's me.
I would assume that others share that.
Maybe others might not share that, but I, I think that's part of the big problems we're having in Detroit right now.
Nancy, and then Richard.
I think one of the things we need to be careful here is that this does not just include schools, this includes municipalities, any, any governmental unit, and so to get so clear as to say, "Not an academic administrator," then we need to also then clarify in the case of EFM's at a school district.
Yes.
Because you can't have, I mean, that just doesn't make any sense at a municipality level. The other thing that I think we need to think about, too, is that when we say things like, let's see if I can find it here.
Haven't they separated them out?
Uh-uh. Well, maybe there's a version somewhere that it does, the one I read in.
The one I've seen, they've taken out the word "financial," they call it an emergency manager, so it covers everything. You're not limited to financial, you have to say it explicitly.
Um, there's a, I've, I've gotta find it in here, too, where you talk about, oh, here, the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, last sentence, "We are particularly concerned about the proposed right of an EFM to dismantle the role of locally elected officials." That's pretty inflammatory. I think that what you need to do is define what you mean by dismantle the role of, because you'll get caught up in the inflammatory language as opposed to what the intent was.
There is a bullet point in here, remove local elected officials from office in financially distressed governments and receivership, and prohibit them from seeking office for 10 years. We could just put that language in there?
Yeah, to remove.
Is that still in?
It's in the synopsis of the law.
Okay, but how are you concerned about it? What is it you're concerned about?
I believe the most recent version took that out, but.
Oh, it did?
Yeah, that was our understanding.
I heard it, they put it back, the Senate didn't put it back in?
I'd have to double-check it. Like I said, it just got adopted this morning, so I'm.
Maybe for clarity, then, you should continue in the event, assuming there's agreement on that, but since we're not sure what the latest version, which could be something happening right now, maybe you should continue your thought on that.
Well, and maybe there's a substitute for the word dismantle, like supplant, that is less inflammatory, but, I mean, I think the, the spirit is, at least, some of us don't want, we, we think political accountability to elected officials is a good thing, we understand there are situations where you need to kinda take that away.
But why don't we make that statement, then?
We don't wanna totally get rid of politically accountable elected officials.
I think that you need to respect, you need to respect the role of publicly elected officials in the ability to run and maintain their. I'm trying to think, governmental units, or whatever.
I think Cassandra's getting something, to respect the role of politically elected.
And then I think that the other question I have is, at what level, I mean, we're getting into legislating here.
Right.
And, and I think that we really need to be very, very careful to not legislate, that isn't our role.
And that's why I like, I like what I've seen here and what's been said, with some exception, that this is, you know, concerns and issues we think are important.
After Richard and Eileen.
One exception, and then he points to me.
After Richard and Eileen, the exception may speak.
Yeah, right.
Richard, please.
I think, I think the real challenge or flaw or in, in the existing law has been uncleareness as to accountability, who, who is accountable, who is the financial manager accountable to?
Just not me, we'll be fine. Make sure that's in there.
There's a lot more work to do.
The House version gives you more responsibility.
And I don't know that that's the best, I, I don't know that that's the best solution, but I think that's what need, that's the issue that needs to be clarified. I, I could envision situations where you'd want to have some discretion as opposed to public, you know, every, every contract, every, everything is, is made public, but on the other hand, I generally, I like the, I like the, what do you call them, sunshine laws, sunshine, so I could, I can support that in principle, though I could go along with, with whatever, but, but clear lines of accountability, in terms of whether the financial manager has to be an educator or not, I don't think that's necessary. This, this is triggered by a financial breakdown, someone who.
That's right.
Someone who doesn't understand the flow of money, and, and that's the corrective, and so he's advised by the guy that's, he's, he has advisors about education, same way he's got advisors about the, the grounds and, and buildings that's involved there as well. So I think, I'm not overly concerned that, that we require a school district's emergency financial manager to, to be an educator, per se. What else did I wanna say? Observe about this. I'm, I'm more interested in a clarifying, I, I do see problems with making the person have to get along with the corrupt and/or incompetent local government officials who cause the problem.
Yeah, okay.
Candidly, and I, you know, I've lived in Detroit, I've lived through it, and so I'm not, I'm not sure that, that's a good idea. But clarifying the, from my perspective, clarifying the accountability is the, is the key that, that I would be concerned with in any resolution that we would adopt.
And before, Eileen, can I expand on my comment there? I mean, I really am troubled, we got this clarified early on, I, I said it earlier in, in public participation, as you know, but, that I did not have a role in, in overseeing, and think I should not. It's one thing to maybe join the treasurer, as I understood it was the only little piece I had in there, if I'm recalling the last version.
Yeah, the last version has the treasurer and the superintendent in concurrence making.
Some names, but.
Well, but appointing and doing the oversight.
So the governor is no longer appointing this person, according to this legislation.
Under the most recent version, that's correct. It would be the treasurer.
But, and the point I just wanted to expand on was in the sense, because it is really, I'm sensitive to this, that it's a little bit by, like being labeled that I'm for 60 kids and a. kids in a classroom and had nothing to do with that. I also don't want the perception to continually be, through public participation or otherwise, that either I or you frankly now, there's a certain inference that maybe you could have overseen this. A little bit of it is by definition, you can't. I mean, I might as well appoint myself. You know, how would one, I think there's a light of day issue that could help get at the bottom line, you know, and cause people to ask questions. And I'm not saying there's no oversight, but I'm talking, I'm speaking for myself right now, that I don't know how, whether I was here or not, a state superintendent could possibly provide oversight. And that's one reason we were happy to get the interpretation from the AG that this position does not have that. But I'm also for clarity in the spirit of what Richard's bringing up, the clarity both ways, you know, not an expectation that somehow this is being watched. Almost by definition, when this happens, there's a lot of authority with that person. One could argue to a fault, you know, this, hopefully, I think this particular thing in Detroit has really helped in one sense, that many other boards and superintendents and union leaders that we've had in this room from districts who are in deficit, I think have taken the responsibility to take care of that themselves because they don't want to be in a position like what has happened in Detroit. And I, I'm trying to say that in a constructive way, because it's a good thing that people see, that's like the absolute last resort, let's take care of our own business as tough as it is and give the five years or whatever it may be necessary to try to get the, in this case, a deficit resolved. And in a way, if people understood that that's the main thing, is something that would be the very last case scenario, then we've, I'm just, I'm saying the good news is we've seen district after district since, in the last two years, step up to that so that they don't end up in a situation where they've in effect turned their authority over. I think it was Eileen and then Kathy, please.
Well, I'm extremely, I'm unsettled by the one, two, third, fourth paragraph, emergency financial manager legislation should not be used to undermine collective bargaining rights of the democratic process. I have no trouble at all with democratic process, but what about a small district on the west side of the state that has a moribund academic record and is now in receivership and gets an EFM? And the one thing that the community wants to have happen is charter schools sponsored by the intermediate school district or some other entity that doesn't want to have union membership or whatever. But is that, can that be then stopped because it's undermining collective bargaining rights? I just think we're overreaching on this.
Yeah.
Because I can imagine situations in which the solution might not have union members for that district. And this, if we advocate for this, could stop reform. I understand the concern, but I think that there's, I think everybody's focused on Detroit and not looking at the whole state.
I agree.
You know, if it, if you're talking about a little district today, it could be a larger district tomorrow. And I think anytime you start hacking away at basic rights that people have fought for for close to a century, you're asking for trouble. I think it's great the way it is.
Kathy, please.
I do too. I like that, I like that because I don't want to see that right diminished.
Then I won't be able to sign this, not because I'm against, I am definitely not against collective bargaining rights, but I can see situations with local control and an EFM that we cannot envision right now, and I don't believe that we can do this. I mean, I don't think we should be advocating for it. I think it's inflammatory and I think people are going to say, well, what about? So, I just don't think it's our job to do that.
Dan?
So, I'm not even sure, not sure exactly how I want to say this, so bear with me. I want to make sure that I'm articulate or say exactly what I mean. So, this, to this point around collective bargaining rights, it seemed to me that this, and it's currently written, suggests what the outcome should be for that small district on the west side of the state. For those of us who are not opposed to collective bargaining rights, I think we would all agree that this legislation shouldn't be used to undermine collective bargaining rights. Now, that community could decide for itself what that, what it wanted to do. And I think the whole, to Mary Ann's point, we should be protecting the right of communities to engage in self-determination. And for the state to take a position that would force communities, or would allow an outsider to that community, which effectively an EFM is, let's be real about who emergency financial managers are, to dictate terms for that local community is, I would argue, Or at least to dictate those terms, rights that have been bargained for and fought for and preserved through all manner of laws, federal, in this particular case, state around public sector employees for years, seems highly inappropriate. So, I, that's the point that I'm making. I don't see this as requiring any particular outcome in any particular school district or city. But to give an emergency financial manager the kind of authority that would allow them to arbitrarily, really, potentially, right, engage in that kind of conduct is, is a step too far, it seems to me.
How do you say it though? I mean, I don't disagree with you, but it seems like we're agreeing only to one side of it. How do you agree to both sides of it? I think that's what Eileen was trying to get at.
Well, I don't know, I guess, so maybe you can make some language that would.
We are, yeah, we're so close to, I didn't imagine we would all be able to agree on something here. So, we're so close, it's worth trying to, if you buy what Dan's arguing with, I totally do.
But the other side of it is absolutely true too. What happens if the fact, if somehow the union process has been used, either with the strike, an illegal strike or something else, to keep the school system from functioning? What other recourse does a, does any EFM have to keep it going? So, I mean, I can, I.
Yeah, and I also agree with that too. There are certain circumstances where this has to happen. But I think the point that Dan was nicely trying to reach for is, some of us, we don't want this legislation to be used as the principal tool or, you know, the new mechanism requiring collective bargaining to be abrogated. If it were the way to say that, that you all would be comfortable with, I think it would be, it would be nice.
But it's not just abrogated. No, it's, I think what I'm trying to say is that it's not just that this, I don't disagree that we want, we don't want this piece of legislation to undermine the right to bargain. I agree with that. Likewise, I don't want this piece of legislation to undermine the right to not bargain. And so, what I'm just saying is how do you get that message across that this is not a tool that's about bargaining or not bargaining? This is a tool about being, this is a tool about being financially and fiscally responsible for the particular situation that we're in. And I don't have the.
Might have had a phrase in there.
You just had a lot of good words there.
Right.
This is not about bargaining, this is about, that was very good. Did you get that, Cassandra?
I don't know whether.
But it is about giving the emergency financial manager tremendous power.
But if they weren't this bad off to begin with, they never would need that. I mean, if, if they didn't need some tremendous power in order to bring it back, the ship aright, why have it to begin with? Why ever go that route?
Yeah, but you're saying then that whatever problems our district might be having is due to collective bargaining.
No, no, absolutely not. I don't want it one side or the other. I want it to be able to look at the goal, which is to keep the ship aright and make certain that education is taking place or that the city is being operated or that fire and police are available or, I mean, we got to keep looking at this, it's not just schools. This is not just about schools. This piece of legislation is about municipalities and schools. And so, we have to, if you're going to suggest language to it, you've got to be inclusive, not exclusive. And so, I think.
I think what's happening here, it is inclusive.
But you keep talking about it in terms of what happens at a school. And so, I think that we need to think about, how did we get here to begin with? We didn't get here because we had a couple of bad months. We got here because we were in such disarray in this either school, municipality, whatever governmental unit we're talking about here, that we are in bankruptcy or just about in bankruptcy. And the only reason we're doing this is because it's so dire. And so, what is it that you have to do in order to get it from that position to a fair and balanced system that provides the services, that people have the quality of life that people want in that community?
Well, I, you know, I, what you're saying is fine, but I think we are only addressing an emergency financial manager with regards to educational units. We, this body.
I understand that.
Okay.
But then you've got to be able to fit it into the legislation.
We have to be specific about that.
We're, we're making recommendations as far as education goes, so.
And that's a simple enough thing to add.
Yeah, we can add that.
Maybe we could put that as a sentence, you know, preamble style sentence, beginning the whole thing, right? With regard to, or.
When applicable to districts.
To the extent that this legislation applies to public schools.
Public school districts.
Richard and then Kathy, please.
Well, correct my understanding if I'm wrong, but you have a financial emergency when the entity, say a school district, has made promises that it can't keep, when it can no longer meet its obligations contractually to its debtors, and that includes its workers who may be unionized, who may have contracts, just as the district has contracts with the state and with vendors and so on and so forth. When the entity is not able to meet its obligations, then you have an emergency financial manager who is like a receiver or like the bankruptcy judge, who has to decide which and how many and what priority these obligations have to be met.
That's right.
The difference is that instead of the, instead of the debtors, not the debtors.
The creditors.
The creditors getting priority, the customers, the students get the priority. And in order to give them priority, I don't, I think that the financial manager has to have the freedom, has to have that power to review all the contracts and obligations and reset them. And this in no way invalidates collective bargaining because the workers can certainly collectively bargain in what, in that new situation. In a sense, in a sense, when they bargain in the old situation, when we thought we had enough money to cover all these salaries, all these things, then, then we weren't, we made agreements that the reality where it was not, subsequent reality was not able to support, which is why you got a financial manager coming in in this first place.
Why.
Kathy and then Cassandra and then Dan.
In a bankruptcy proceeding, a judge can only void contracts, labor contracts, if there is prior good faith bargaining. They have to have a period of good faith bargaining before the judge can validate contracts. There's nothing in this legislation that would even provide for that. They just say, just avoid the contracts. And I think that, I think that would be a step too far, as Dan put it. So, the other, I just wanted to mention that, I think it was Mr. White earlier today suggested that a study be done of the emergency financial manager operations in Detroit, see how it worked. That might be a good idea.
Do you think we have time before tomorrow?
No, we can't do it before tomorrow, but probably should have been done before the legislation was drafted.
Cassandra?
It still might be useful for future reference. I think it's a good idea. And I think Richard is right about the accountability, because there has to be somebody that this person is accountable to.
So, are you saying there might be language about good faith bargaining first and then blah blah? I'm just trying to clarify what I'm, but Cassandra, maybe you're working on that anyway, so I shouldn't jump ahead.
I've been adding some stuff in, but I just want to, Kathy kind of made the point that I was going to make, but I just want to say that my concern with this legislation really is when you take this legislation and you couple it with the facts that we have a budget coming out or that has come out that calls for major cuts. So, I don't think it's fair, and I don't, I'm not suggesting you said this, but in moving forward, I don't think it will necessarily be the fault of the local unit that they find themselves in financial distress. And so, you know, my concern is that we're moving forward with a state budget that's going to create situations. And then we're going to come in with an emergency financial manager legislation that allows for certain things to take place. And I think that's where I would like us to be able to weigh in and say, we just want to make sure that we're being careful that, you know, we are allowing people, we're not removing rights from individuals. If there's another way to say that, I'm more than happy to, you know, change the language. But I think it is important for us to recognize that it's not necessarily the fault of the district, the schools or the employees that they might find themselves in this situation.
Dan, please.
There's an issue of collective fate that I just want to raise for all of us. We had a discussion earlier when we were talking about the budget around the fact that some, some districts have done a lot of the hard work already. It seems to me that those districts that have done a lot of the hard work already will be particularly penalized by this legislation as it's currently proposed, only because there's obviously less opportunity to renegotiate those contracts in such a way that there would be significant cost savings. And so, what you're likely to see, I would, I would think anyway, is that a, I'll just use a hypothetical here, a rural district that hasn't done the hard work yet, but that faces significant transportation costs, which makes them more susceptible to being in deficit. And I think we've seen that it's the high poverty urban districts and the rural districts that are most at risk currently, that that district would be much more likely to, I mean, so we're, it was earlier suggested that we're talking about Detroit. I don't think we're just talking about Detroit.
No, we're not.
This is a statewide issue and we're talking about rural communities, just like we're talking about urban communities, that will have to deal with this as it's currently written. I just want to make clear that we're not talking just about Detroit. We're talking about something that will have statewide implications. And I think that as a, as a statewide elected body that cares about outcomes for kids, we do have an obligation to speak our point of view on this.
Okay. Eileen, please.
I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, kids are at the center of everything that I believe has to happen in education. And so, I look at almost everything else around it as something that needs to be worked through to develop the supports that kids need. And I recognize that, that adult bargaining rights, collective bargaining rights are an important aspect of the way that education has come to be in Michigan for better or for worse. So, I would like to point out that there are some for worsers, and I can anticipate what those will cause or be in the future. But I think what all of us are saying is it shouldn't be the first course of attack if an EFM takes over, that it should be perhaps the last course of action that's taken, that everything else should be considered prior to that. So, we want to make sure that the adults that surround the kids are of high quality. And if being union is part of that, which it is in most cases, I'm not drawing a distinction on union, but I am saying that the kids have to be at the center of it. So, how we can get to that spot, which I agree with everybody else, is important, and I'd love to try us. I just don't know exactly what I was just saying. Cassandra, inspiration is not in my eyeball.
I think we're all on the same page.
You just said it, you just said it. Not be used as a first priority to, I'm just scribbling this in. No, this is something we could say together perhaps.
Dan, please.
This, so, I love your thought.
Love your thought.
Love it. And to Nancy's point that this legislation applies to. And to Nancy's point, that this legislation applies to both cities and schools, perhaps the point that we're making fundamentally is that it's a very different situation, because, I mean, schools should be treated differently. And so I just, I, I don't know, and maybe that's, I don't know, I haven't thought it through, obviously. I don't know if that's at the heart of what's going on in this conversation, but that may be worth saying. It is a different situ, I would argue, it is a very different situation.
It is, and I guess that's what I was trying to subtly get people to talk about.
That worked.
Lisa's getting sickly, but, I mean, this train is moving, and it's going to leave the station, I think. I mean, I agree with Dan's comment, which is, and I appreciate others trying to help with this, it is important for us to make some reflections on this, and, and for the record, if, if they can be used to tilt it, great, but let's be realistic. But it is, you know, this is an important impact on education and municipal governance and financing, so it is a big deal.
Nancy, please.
I think that when, as I think this through, I'm kind of with Dan, I'm trying to talk and think at the same time, which clearly is, it's proving clearly, clearly that that's not as easy as it might seem, at least not for me. I think when you think about what has led us here, even though this, Dan, I agree with you wholeheartedly, this is something that will affect the entire state, what has gotten us here has been the past year's history of Detroit's emergency financial manager. Like it or not, it's true. And so in light of that, I think what we have to think about is, okay, so what is it that's happened over the last two years that's gotten everybody so up in arms that they feel compelled to have this piece of legislation passed, or changed, or adjusted, or whatever it was? So as I think about that, I'm thinking that transparency is one of them, accountability is another thing, and making certain that kids still come first is the third thing. And if we were to say those three things, and those three things alone, I think you'd go a heck of a long way in coming to agreement at this group about what has to happen in legislation, that we cover those three things.
I would add a fourth, and that is that the, when we're talking about schools, emergency financial managers should not be academic leaders. They should not assume the role of academic chief for the, the district.
I guess I was looking for what we could all agree to, and, and that, you know, I understand that.
I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
My only concern with putting that in there, though, is anyone can make the case that their side fits that. Like, I can come up with some high in the sky idea and say, it's transparent, accountable, and kids come first, and you could have an exact opposite idea and make the same claim. So it doesn't really...
I wasn't thinking that was the only language we'd use. I'm just saying if we stuck to those three ideas...
Okay.
And made it more specific, then.
Okay.
Does that make sense, or not?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we're adding specifics, but...
Because I think that's what the litmus test is, that I've got to ask myself every time I read something in here, does that make, does that deal with accountability, transparency, or putting kids first? And you could have much of the same language in here, but it's got, it's got to meet those three criteria for me in order to agree to it? That's all I was, that was the point I was trying to make.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
But probably not very clear.
We need to, either... Can I, just as chair chime in, without a vote, obviously, but I think with this, probably come into a head tomorrow. The value, I think, I'm just observing here, I mean, it's the board's call and the final analysis, but the value here would be what Ds and Rs might be able to come together on, because if it did end up, if I may say this respectfully, Ds on one side, Rs on the other, it'll be dismissed tomorrow anyway, and I think it just won't serve.
Right.
But on the other hand, maybe that can't happen unless it has key elements. So, I mean, I think you're thinking that way, because that's, that's the value that it would add, that tomorrow, these guys are going to report that Rs and Ds got together on a very important issue, and maybe at least help move the ball on one or two of them without making, trying to influence every aspect of it, because that's not likely at this late time, anyway. I don't know if that makes the task easier or harder, I'm just observing that that's, if you think about what we're really trying to do, it's have an impact on tomorrow. And if it's an R and D split, it'll be dismissed, you know, it's, okay, there we go again. Not, not you go again, but they're the, yes, sir. And then ma'am.
This is a totally, totally different aspect of it, but I, as I think about financial emergency, there are different kinds. One is the financial emergency have, where, where some folks were stealing you blind, and now it'll take, you know, a year or two to get some honest people in there, some, repay the, the debts, and get back to normal. There's the kind of financial emergency that I think we've all been through with the real estate crisis, people out of work, after, that's an emergency that might last for three to five years, and then people get back to work, and the economy recovers, and it's going to, you know, some places sooner than others. That's another kind of financial emergency. But another kind is adjustment to change conditions. Detroit's gone from a million to less than, from two million to less than, less than a million in my lifetime, and you, you can't keep, and part of the problem is that, that people keep wanting to operate as if Detroit still had 200,000 kids, when in fact, now they're, well, they're less than 100,000 now. Seventy thousand, yeah. And so that's an emergency of adjusting to new conditions that aren't going to change, if anything, are going to work. And I think you see that with Robert Bob's tenure, for all the good he's done, and I'm an admirer of his, but, but he's not able to change demography. Detroit's still losing students at the same rate that it was before, and apparently still running up deficits the way it did before. So that's a different kind of emergency, and acknowledging this, I'm not, I'm not sure what that implies towards this legislation or the issues that we're discussing, but just to note that there are different kinds of, of financial emergencies, and maybe they would call for different kinds of managers.
Can we, we need to reach closure, so can we try some language here and see if we can get the kind of agreement? Do you have a picture of this, Cassandra?
Mm-hmm.
You want me to try it? Or go ahead.
Oh, go for it.
Well, I'm trying to, so, go ahead.
I can't read your handwriting.
No, no, it's mine, that's the problem.
I, I think I captured everything, but please let me know if I have not. "To the extent that this legislation applies to public school districts and in the interest of transparency, accountability, and putting children first, the SBE recommends the following: The Michigan Constitution invests the State Board of Education with leadership and general supervision over all public education. Public schools in the state of Michigan are facing serious financial cuts at the state level. As a result, many schools and districts may face financial distress, and some may end up under the direction of an emergency financial manager. Currently, the Detroit Public Schools have been under the direction of an EFM for, for the past two years. This has led to the identification of limitations on the current law, Public Act 72. Therefore, the State Board of Education supports updating Public Act 72 to demonstrate clear qualifications, roles, and responsibilities of an EFM, and allow public oversight of an EFM by establishing an oversight board that will provide leadership on behalf of the state. In addition, EFM legislation should require frequent public disclosure of financial decisions such as contracts. However, the SBE is concerned that the current legislation removes public oversight. Emergency financial manager legislation should not be used, used as a first priority to undermine collective bargaining rights of the democratic process. EFM legislation should respect the role of publicly... Furthermore, EFM legislation should respect the role of publicly elected officials and their position. The State Board of Education urges the state legislature to pass EFM legislation that clearly defines the qualifications and role of an EFM while confirming the rights of individuals to engage in their government."
Mary Ann?
Okay. I really like it. I really like it, except for the first...
First sentence?
No, the fir, taking, not looking at eliminating collective bargaining on the first...
As a first priority?
Yeah, because then it's like saying the second or third is okay.
I, I think, given the discussion, this is about as good and as strong a statement as we can make.
I like the original. It won't be used to undermine collective bargaining. It's plain and simple. What's the matter with that?
Because we all agree.
We've had a lot of...
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if you wanted a group statement, you can't have it for one person.
We're compromising, Mary Ann.
It's a compromise.
As always, without, while still saying something significant.
Yeah.
Well, it's saying it's okay down the line, and I don't think it's okay.
Others, can people live with that language, with, with that accepted?
Which?
What Cassandra just read, are you...
I can live with that language.
Yeah, no, I'm not, so I move support, or has this been moved and supported yet?
No.
I move support of the resolution as...
Read.
Read dramatically by Vice President.
A second.
Support, it was moved by John, it was supported.
Do you think that's...
By Eileen.
Wait, wait. No reference to it, rather than say that.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, if you want to take it out completely, that's what, I, I think that's less harmful than the language is there, though.
I disagree, I think, and I would just suggest putting on, you know, our Democratic friends hats. We are, as I said at the beginning, we are appreciative and should support not using these tools of public policy change to try to destroy collective bargaining. And so saying something that we don't want this legislation to be used as a first tool, or as a first priority in order to accomplish that, is saying something.
I don't think it is. What you just said, you don't want to use it to destroy collective bargaining, is fine, but to say the first puts it out there that it's okay down the line, and I...
Well, it's acknowledging what was discussed. There may be circumstances in which that decision needs to be reached by the community.
Even if there are, we don't have to be the ones to endorse that.
Richard, please.
I'm curious, Kathy, how would you reword that if you were to take, take that out?
I don't have, I don't have the latest language.
If you took that out, it would simply say, emergency financial manager legislation should not be used to undermine the democratic process.
Undermine democratic processes, or...
We could do that.
I could accept that.
I can accept that.
Is that what we want to do?
Yep.
Is that what you want to do, Cassandra?
Well, I want the group to have a statement.
And I'm afraid if we do...
I would like to keep the original language, that would have been fine with me, but if it's...
But you already, you...
But we're not going to get, we're not going to get a unanimous thing with the language, the original language or this proposed language, so maybe that's why I'm thinking.
I, so, not sure how to say this well, either, but...
Oh, go for it.
Join the club. I guess that the decision that we've got to make is about whether we're trying to influence the legislative process, or make a political statement.
That's right.
That won't influence the legislative process. Fundamentally, that's the distinction that is being drawn, in that the compromise is asking of us, right? That's the tension, if we just name it. And I guess each one of us has to vote how we feel in that regard. I'm clear, for me, that a political statement that doesn't influence the political process is not valuable. So I'm voting to influence the political process.
I would like to do that, too.
So which does that, so which do you support? Which one is that? I want to be for it, too.
I think the compromise language has the opportunity, because it will gain vote, votes of both Democrats and Republicans here, to influence the political process. If there's any hope of doing so, that's the only hope there is.
The only hope there is, I think.
Which, which language would that be?
The compromise language.
There's two compromises. Cassandra's or Kathy's?
Original narration.
The first compromise, the language that Cassandra read initially.
Okay.
As I moved.
That's, that's on the floor, by the way, just procedurally, that one's on the floor right now.
That, which, which, I forget who moved it, but...
John, and then Eileen.
Right, John moved it, Eileen seconded. That has the opportunity to influence the debate, if anything does, and arguably nothing does, but if anything out of this body's going to influence the debate, it would be something that has support from both, from, from members of both parties sitting at this table. A political statement is fine, and it's just a political statement. Symbols in the wind. I'm not interested in that.
But, you know, we need to show some leadership, and I don't think that shows...
That's what he's saying, is that shows the leadership. The other one, where you take it out, doesn't show any leadership.
Okay.
I have one additional suggestion, just to throw out there. Instead, we could say, emergency financial manager legislation should not be used to undermine individual rights or the democratic process.
Well, yeah, I don't know that individual, I don't, I don't know that individual rights are the same as the collective bargaining, so, but I hear what you're trying to come up with. I'm fine with just saying the democratic process. I'm also fine with, with what Cassandra read originally.
Right, and I think because that's on the floor, we got to vote that first, and then if we want to change it again, we...
Right, the one on the floor is the first priority language, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
That's what's on the floor?
Yeah.
That's what John...
John moved it, Eileen seconded it.
That's what Dan was referring to, that it might have some traction.
Saying you have to vote for it, I'm just saying, on the floor procedurally, John moved, and Eileen supported.
Can I add one? Oops, I'm sorry.
Sure.
May I move to amend? Oh, I'm sorry, did you still...
Well, I was just going to say, instead of saying it should only be used as, should not be used as a first resort, I'm just wondering if we flip that and said that it should be used only when all other means of resolving the budget issues have failed? Whether that helps?
Does that...
Or something, I'm sorry. Should be used only as...
An amendment?
See, it still puts the option out there of doing away with it.
Yeah, it does.
And that's what I'm opposed to.
That's what I think, I like Dan's language, that it's a step too far.
No, Dan's agree with that.
I personally agree that it is a step too far, and at the same time, very practically recognizing that legislation is working its way through the process, and will be voted on tomorrow, and that we have a governor who's going to sign it, and if we want to influence that legislation, there's a path forward for us, and it's to agree to some compromise language. If we don't care to influence that legislation, but want to make a political statement, then there's another path forward for us. I just don't think it's a practically effective one.
Said that better than I did 20 minutes ago, but that's, no, seriously, I think that's a thoughtful way to think about what's our purpose, and we're going to, okay, call the question.
Can you read that sentence again, just so everybody's clear about what they're voting on?
I will read the whole paragraph.
Oh, I love it.
Dramatically.
"However, the SBE is concerned that the current legislation removes public oversight. Emergency financial manager legislation should not be used as a first priority to undermine collective bargaining rights or the democratic process. Furthermore, EFM legislation should respect the role of publicly elected officials and their position."
Okay.
That's exactly...
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Aye.
Aye.
Voila.
Okay.
Very good, very good. Bipartisan.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is, this is a marriage maiden.
We are living off the form. It's got to be right.
Really, we have to capture.
If we've got Republicans and Democrats, for it and against it.
We have to capture this moment. I want to picture a Richard and Mary Ann.
How do you like that strange bedfell?
We have some people with principles on this board, thank you very much.
But can, can I just, really, in my, not as chair or whatever, but as superintendent, I do think, I really think it's very thoughtful conversation, number one. Trying to get something to influence a fast track is really important, and I, without saying what the language should have been, you know, I do think that that should be what our mindset is on everything, is if we can influence it, you know, why bother? And so I appreciate that thoughtful conversation, it doesn't mean that, well, we'll leave it at that.
Mike, I have another 90 minutes of next year to do.
Yeah, you, you did. Was there any other major?
No.
We have to have a legislative committee, not only for the, not only for the national stuff, but there's other legislation that's been introduced, it's just horrendous. We need to be weighing in on that, too.
Well, but we've been trying to find a name that we can do that. The problem with, there's good news and bad news in River City here. The good news is, we've become very politically active with our legislators. The bad news is that limits the amount of time we have to actually have a legislative committee meeting, and so I was writing a note to you guys... And so I will be happy to meet with this group here to try and come up with something, but it has not been easy coming to a date to even have the committee meeting, because we've been outdoing things, which is good.
Well, we've been outdoing things, but there's, there's not a big rush about that, because there's an injunction.
There is a big rush about that.
So we, the legislature, you know, if they do it next week, it doesn't make that much difference.
No, that's why we're, we're trying to...
We all know, we're all wanting to move ahead, and we will, so, all right.
Okay, John, I think it's your report. Everyone's getting up and leaving, it must be really interesting.
Hot air comment, where was that? And I will, I won't say much of anything, and obviously no one's paying attention, anyway, so.
Mertz and Mike.
We'll keep advancing our priorities. Advance relentlessly.
She's paying attention.
Get that legislative committee to meet.
Mertz and Mike are listening, and the others are laughing.
The only other thing, we have, there's just a couple of rogue committees, the...
Rogue committees?
The deaf school committee, or, no, the deaf school trust fund, MSDB.
Isn't that a rogue committee? It's official committee.
It's rogue in a sense. We haven't just solidified the membership of it, and Eileen was nicely interested in participating, along with, who else was on that committee, Mary Ann and Kathy?
Yeah.
So it, just, Liz is gone, so if the, if the three of you want to remain, and Eileen Wiser was happily eager or interested in joining.
What committee was this again?
The, um...
The rogue.
The rogue committee.
The rogue committee, yeah.
The other rogue committee is the-
Wear T-shirts, the big R on it.
The health clinics committee around governing that, that grant, correct? Cassandra and Kathy were on, and Liz was also on, so if anyone has any interest in being a board member, serving on the committee overseeing the health clinic work.
I'll take Liz's.
Okay, great, that would be wonderful. And then I said what I encouraged, let's get our act together around federal legislation, and continue doing what we're doing, so, thank you.
Okay, and then for my report, I'll eliminate everything and find another way to do it other than one item, which would be, tentatively, are a number of you going to the DC combined?
I'm not.
Who might be?
I'm going.
Well, is NASB part of that?
Yes, it's the one time, it's been a NASB and, and CCSO, my group combo. And I should clarify, I'm not going to Cleveland to vacation. This is a Cleveland Clinic follow-up thing-
Yeah.
-that got caught awkwardly in there for a moment before, but I, otherwise I'd be there. It's going to be, I think it'll be very powerful, and I think, but at any rate, if you do change your mind or decide to add to it, just let Lisa know, so we can help make, we can accommodate.
You just reminded me, there was an orientation day or half-day for new board members, which I think is working right for Dan, for Richard.
Date change.
Date change again, okay.
April 11th, hopefully, good for Dan.
For a chance for new board members, and I encourage old board members, I'm going to do it, to just go around and spend a little time with the directors and understand more fully what the heck are people doing, and what are the responsibilities, and what have we got to work with in the Department of Education?
Date to be determined.
Okay, all right, date to be determined.
Old board member orientation will be known by the time.
There's still many, the staff has been shuffled so much, I'm not sure I know who's doing what.
That's why I said, everybody can come.
It's just a way of letting us know.
That's why she, he said, come, come to this.
Jennifer Granholm's the new receptionist, went to first come in. That sounded disrespectful, and I don't mean that, actually, I'm trying to find a way, trying to find a way to say that this place, no, meet the press, do you see that? We will, why don't we do a little updated organizational chart, you know?
That'd be great.
In general, what it is, is it's empty positions, frankly, but there are a few, a few that have been filled.
I was working on chart schools now, and who's, you know, that kind of...
Yeah. Okay.
Friday, April 29. Let me check, let me check, I appreciate the suggestion.
Okay, let's see, Matenga's not here. Any other? Okay.
Do we have a, no, we don't have a, what's the word I'm looking for?
Consent agenda.
Thank you.
No, I mean, this would have, under the old, I know we're evolving as we speak, but under the original model, this wouldn't have been, this would have been one of those...
I see, okay.
It turned out to be a think meeting, so, it's okay. But, so no consent, and as you know, as always, pass on to agenda planning committee members, any thoughts for the next one? And any final thoughts or actions?
No. Thank you all. I was at a meeting last week with people who were doing arts programs in education in some of the schools, which is really good to know, and one of the people there was from Oakland Schools, and said that they were having an enrichment expo on March 28th, and I'll be glad to pass this around, I'll send you the email, what's available to schools to get arts education programs without, without having, you know, to do it themselves. It sounds like it's, it's the first time I've ever done that, and it looks like it's kind of interesting. So that was, it was good to know that there are people that are doing that.
Yeah. Eileen, please.
I have three quick things. First of all, I won't give you the MAGBE, I won't give you the National Assessment of Educational Progress science results for Detroit and for Michigan, but I will at the next, the next session if I can. Second thing is that Alberto Cavalo, who is the superintendent of Miami Day, talked last week about what it takes to turn around failing schools in other cities. And when he first came on board, he had 19 schools that he needed to close or reconstitute, and he did it by going to the parents at each of the schools and saying, here's the deal, you are no longer supply side, you are demand side. As parents, you need to demand the very best for your children. Here are accurate test results, not what you've known in the past, this is, this is what's wrong. And when he did that, he told them he was also ready to use the data constructively, and that he would give them the best principal in the state if they were willing to support it. And he did, he went out at Central High and did that. And the whole equation changed for the, Joseph, you may have heard the story, but they're making AYP, they've gone from a completely failing school to making AYP, and the dynamics are that the parents are forcing him to make these changes and stay ahead, and he, he just, he says, this is the way to go, you will never look back. And the other thing that I wanted to show you, and I'll see if I can do this legally, but this is-
That's always good.
This is a Stradivarius copy that was made in a copying machine, and according to the economist-
Printer.
Sorry, centering machine, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's made in a, it's made in a 3D laser centering processor printer, and it plays beautifully. And this is a titanium glove that was made in a 3D processing printer. The, at this point, this technology exists in a way that allows manufacturing of a thousand parts to be done cost-effectively, not on an assembly line, but in copying machines, okay? And Bob Thompson's School for Science, or UPREP, has one, actually, they have a couple, and I didn't understand what it was when I saw it. But at this, at this point in time, they're talking about having towns have a printer, and being able to manufacture just about anything that fits into the printer size. So we, in Michigan, need to be aware of this, and I'll see if I can get legal copies or something.
Carl Sagan would be amazed.
Yeah, I'm amazed.
He is.
Are we on board?
Yes, please.
I had a question with regards to the military family, and how, how does that all work? Do districts give names to, well...
Well, first of all, it's voluntary.
Military group?
No, they give it, they put it in the data system, the student data system, not to any military group. And the intent behind it is that these kids might have a mom with dual deployments, and this would call to the attention of the guidance counselor that there are some unique needs here, and because they tend to be transient, it's hard to keep track of it.
My question really is, is this a violation of privacy of naming people and targeting their...
No, and this is both Duncan...
I mean, if some other group wants to kind of do something beneficial for students, so they would get the same information.
I mean, we probably need to know a specific example.
Say somebody wants to help a homeless kid.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. Now, it would, it would be up to the student and the family whether they wanted to identify themselves as that, just the same with the military. And then it would be up to the district whether or not they want to voluntarily put that in their field, in the computer field, because we can't make them do it.
So that's the difference.
That would be a good-
Put in the document, the field.
Into the, into the data, so that as a kid's moving around, if he becomes a parent, one of the, one of the issues, which another one would be very good, would be homeless, that people understand, but they have to self-report. I mean, no one has to report on, my mom's deployed overseas, or that I'm homeless. But if they were to and put it in a field, it helps as they're going through the system for people to understand there's other issues going on, that was it. Duncan kind of initiated this originally, and I think it's smart, you know, just trying to give one other, there is some kind of homeless...
There's already a flag in the data.
For homeless.
There's an identifier.
For homeless now. So it's a similar example.
Yes.
Not recruiting, I mean, it's a child, he's third grade and doesn't...
I was just wondering, I'm trying to get my schedule worse.